One of the reasons we want to become a destination versus a pass through is because, for an example, I mean, these roads are getting wore out. None of that traffic that's wearing it out is contributing back to repairing it or maintaining it. So that's definitely one of the things that I like about trying to bring in some businesses, especially along the corridors and actually developing locations out there that are meaningful. And try to capture some of that pass through for them to say, hey, you know, yeah, this is the place to go.
Well, in allowing those types of development, if they were to come in and we get more people that live here in this center part of town, they will likely support. It's how we get more foot traffic here in town center, so it does feed that. Any other comments or anything about the C1, C2, us doing, looking at that?
No, I mean, we definitely need to look at it. And you know what I'd really like to do is, once we get a little further down, I mean, this might be six months, this may be two years, I don't know. But when something starts kind of becoming a little bit more appealing, I would love to bring some of those or open the form to those landowners and have them come in there. So we can kind of discuss it. And when I say we, I'm talking about your EDC board, your KBB board, I mean, kind of a mixed board. And talk about, it kind of almost like another community planning.
True, okay.
But something that's going to focus on those C1, C2s and figure out what they want to do with it. And then how do we adapt what they want to do to what the city can optimize? Because of course, in the end of the day, we want to do what's best for the city and try to incorporate, of course, folks that own the area into what their dreams are. So I definitely think that would be a good idea. I don't know how far out we need to look or project that.
Okay.
But definitely, you know, moving forward, would they be open to overlays in their areas? Or would they be open to these type of things? I'd even bring in the owners of the junkyards and say, hey, you know, we're planning on doing this. Because the thing is, is you incentivize them to sell their property because it's going to become worth more if these other locations are put in. Well, I'm only getting so much a month out of this junkyard. Well, I could sell this thing for triple. Or I could just clean this thing up and then develop it and own it myself, you know? So there's those opportunities as well we need to look at.
Okay. Excellent. Any other thoughts on that?
So, you know, the thing that I always look at is that DFW is the fourth largest metropolitan region in the nation. Kennedale is smack dab in the middle of it. And for us to not have more development, to not have a larger sales base and sales tax base and revenue, you know, we're not in the right spot. And so I think understanding the true value of the land that we do have within, on the Parkway and being open to those types of developments, to being open to the, where the market could really go with those, to allow the developers and the owners of those lands to give them the opportunity to develop really what that, what would really truly be the highest and best use for that land, I think is very important. And so incorporating something like this, that is this mixed use development, promoting some more of this walkability, having those mixed use developments. But the Parkway, Parkway is, it's a big cutter, right? So it's like either you're walking on this side with the town center and everything else, or you're trying to walk on the other side. But, you know, you got to play Frogger to get across 287.
Right, well, I think that's been beneficial, that's been a great discussion as far as it were.
You know, one thing I think it would help the town center area, if we were to reimagine it, I hate that word, but it is what it is. This is kind of the historical town center for Kennedale. As far as back as, I mean, you go back to where the old school was, right across from here. It would be nice to actually make this literally mirror a historical area. You know, with the, a different style of lighting, to give pathways, that type of lighting. Basically to be a place that you feel, you can almost go back in time and it's, it's kind of, you go back to Mansfield, for example, they have a historical area. A lot of them, Fort Worth, they all have historical areas. I mean, we could literally come up with different street signage.
Yeah, you know, in our comp plan, it speaks to that specifically, the new comp plan, about catalyst project in the town center, but also neighborhood signage, neighborhood identification. But when we're talking about the Parkway itself, I just, you know, to encourage mixed use, not to, we're not doing away with anybody that's existing there, but we do have a lot of pockets that haven't been developed, so we can encourage those types of things. So I think that's been a great discussion. I've got a note here for town center, but in our comp plan, it does talk about that, a catalyst project, so I think that would be a good idea. How can we re-envision town center and make it more historic or more appealing? You know, it also talks about the First United Methodist Church, and they recently had a unveiling of a historical plaque there, right? So maybe we need to be identifying what little, we have a little historical property in town, but let's go ahead and identify that, celebrate it, and then make it more walkable here in downtown. That'd be a good catalyst project, I think.
I mean, we've talked about walkability for what, last three years that I've been around? And that's one of the things, I think it should start right here and spread out. So we were talking about putting trails down in the creeks and stuff like that. It, I think that's a vision that's kind of a far off thing right now. But starting here, where you have shops, you have walkways, you have pathways. This area should feel like I could come in here anytime, day or night, and just feel like I can walk this area and not feel like I'm going to get mugged or, God sakes, you know, attacked by a homeless crackhead. I mean, no offense to them, I know they're all not on it, but we've seen them. So, you know, you definitely want to feel like there's enough welcoming area. And I think this area is kind of special and unique to Kennedale. It should be celebrated as such. I think a lot of the area could be retooled, if you will, to have that feeling of, kind of like the center, the center walkway area. I mean, if you ever go to Waukesha Hachie, for example, I'm from Ellis County. There is historical areas out there, and it feels like you just walked back in the 1800s.
It does, right there by the school, university downtown area's got a good steakhouse down there, too.
Rocket Cafe, my friend, if you haven't been.
Yeah, Prime, Prime is a good one, Prime Steakhouse. Great, and they do a good job as far as branding, right, murals, art, things like that.
Exactly.
And I've got, we're actually working on some ideas here in town center to get more, encourage more art here in town. But just to summarize our discussion, for those who are joining us online, we've been talking about land use tables. We talked about our Oak Crest and Entertainment Overlay Districts that our comp plan identifies for redevelopment. We talked about transit oriented development, encouraging some more mixed use housing within our existing commercial districts. Now I kind of want to shift to the idea of accessory dwelling units, allowing ADUs in our residential districts, right? So AG R1 through R4, stopping there, right? But in our Old Town Districts, when I say accessory dwelling unit, I get a lot of property owners that are, their parents are aging and they want to bring them home, but they don't have the space for them. And so they have to, they want to build like a mother-in-law suite detached structure in the back, not to rent it out for like a short-term rental or anything like that. This book, one of the things I think it does a good job is it actually has some site-specific standards for accessory dwelling units. So you couldn't have like its own meter, right, from on core, its own, you know, water bill, water meter. It can't have its own address, right? So, but we can allow people to at least to build those detached structures in their, on their property for their, for their home, you know, for relatives, things of that nature. Maybe they've got a kid that's back from college, or maybe they want to encourage them to leave the house, but maybe not the comfort of home, right? You know, there's a lot in town that liked it, that I'm sure mom and dad would like to have them, their home back at some point, right? But one of the things we are, in our current zoning, we don't, we don't allow it by right, meaning they have to apply, they got to pay a fee. Not only do they have to pay the cost to draw up the plans and the construction costs and everything, but they got to pay a fee to come ask for permission, right, to the Board of Adjustment. And we've had a couple of those here recently that they said, you know what? I'd like to do that, but it's, they hear about the sentiment in town, right? They've got a lot of folks that are timid, they don't want to come before the boards, they don't want to come before council, just because Kennedale's history, right, of, towards development and other types of housing. I'll leave it at that. But what, I, we are considering allowing ADUs by right in a residential district. So if you've got property, that's AG property, R1, 2, 3, 4, as long as you've got the space for them, right? You can't, you couldn't build a whole resident, another second home, so we can control it with design standards and limited square footages and things like that. But how do you feel about that?
Is that going to be subject to the amount of building structures that can be placed on a property? Because I mean, right now, there's, it's limited to one.
That's correct.
So if you have, let's say, a shop in the back, would we be saying that that's not considered a structure? And it could be a secondary structure to the house, to the property, to the real property itself? Or would that be something that we would look at as, well, you've already got a structure back there? The only thing you can do is modify the structure to include a living space on it?
That's a great point, particularly in our R3 zone districts in town, which we have all over town. And we, a lot of our R3 properties, normal sizes, you know, 50, 60, 70-foot wide lots by 100, but a lot of them are two acres, one acre, two acre, three acres. And it says you could only have one accessory building. That's a shop, that's a shed. Do we, we're actually considering changing that and allowing for, you know, someone to have a shop or a shed, you know, a tool shed, and allowing one of these ADUs to go back there in the R3, or really in our, in all the districts. But R3 specifically, I had residences on certain part of town that they've got several acres. And if they were to apply for a building permit to put another shop there, I'd have to deny them because they can only have one, right? That doesn't, that doesn't seem fair or make sense. So we're, we want to change that. So to your point, I don't think it should count against it. I think, you know, I think we can maybe put a reasonable limit on that. Because I'd hate someone that'd have a detached garage or a carport and then want to still have the space to do it. If you've got the space for it, you know, let's, let's let them do it, you know?
I mean, the way to word that would simply be a detached addition to the home versus an accessory building.
Right, you know, there's storage, there's how are you going to use it, right? So you couldn't have, you know, four sheds in the back. I don't, it's just, you're just cramming stuff in there, right? Those, those at some point become fire hazards. But, you know, you, you know, could we, could we relax some things for ADUs specifically? I think absolutely we can.
I think that just the general purpose use of it might be the way to go with something to that effect. Because now you're looking at living space, which would be, let's just say hypothetically, it would be an addition to the home, but it just happens to be separate versus a shed use or a shop use or attached garage, anything like that. Because to me, that's more of a, it's a different use. It's not a living space.
That's great.
I think I would word it in something like that when we look at allowing something. And that way you can kind of control it as well of, oh, that's a shed. No, I'm not going to let you live in a shed.
Yeah, we, I would much rather have someone build a habitable space than living in a shed because we have those in town.
Yes, we do. That's kind of where I'm getting at, leading to it. If it's going to be something like that, then of course we go back to the design comp, ability to control what's going on with that. But still give, you know, the citizens out here, especially the ones like you mentioned, they sit on five acres and they have a small utility shedding out there. Why can't they have this? Or, I mean, to me, I think that's a special circumstance requirement. That might be a waiver type thing we could look at, that's another thing, you know?
Well, what we're talking about is allowing it by right. So meaning they don't need to have to go to the, you know, ask special permission to do that. They can, they can just go ahead and, you know, of course they'll have to get permits, it'll have to meet residential code and everything like that. But that's, that's kind of our ideas. And any, any other thoughts about allowing that by right? Or do we still want to make them go through the Board of Adjustment?
I think allowing them to have it outright, it's a decision that, like, if their elderly parents were to have, it will not become an Airbnb. That's why I changed those, you know, like, look before, you know, my mom and dad now they're deceased, I have the property, I have my home, I want to rent it out, Airbnb.
And we, and we have, we have an ordinance specific to Airbnb, so that could be something we tie into that to help control that. Right now, we do have something in there where it can't be used as a rental on that. Some cities are okay with that, like college towns and things like that. I don't know if that's appropriate here, but that's not for me to say. That would be for you and council to say. But any other thoughts on ADUs?
I don't think there's any real way to control whether or not, after the aging parent passes, that it's going to become a rental property. And even if you're on the same, you know, you make it on the same electrical, everything else, water utilities, it's just a split cost, right? It's just, you know, utilities included, right? Now, I don't think that having the accessory dwelling units, I don't think it necessarily should have to go through the whole process of going in for the Board of Appeals or anything like that. You know, you want to put in a pool with a pool house. You don't have to have an aging parent to do that, maybe you just want to do that. And, but as long as we're keeping the same, you know, pervious standards, portions of it. But I do think that we need to look at maybe changing the number of accessory dwelling buildings based upon lot size. So that we're fixing the R3 problem without saying that, yeah, you can have a shop, a woodshed, a storage shed, an accessory dwelling unit, a detached garage, right? Not by saying, you know, by saying, but
Sure.
Based upon the acreage of your home, right? I think maybe some, that would be a better way to kind of control it, that we're, it's possible if you have the space.
Maybe, we don't want three ADUs in one property, right? You know, yeah, that's a great point, okay.
I think it'd probably best to tie it to a percentage of the actual area of the land.
That could be, yeah, right now, you know, lot coverage is a way to control that, also.
If I got 10 acres and I'm told I can only have one or two buildings?
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying, it really should be
I don't want to do that right now.
Percentage of
I'll make him do that.
I mean, you don't necessarily want somebody to go out there and build a building. I'm just going to leave it like that, whatever use it is, it's going to basically take up their entire backyard and say, that's my one building.
Yeah, yeah, well, and we limit it to 10% of the rear yard. But if your rear yard is six acres, that's a big accessory building. So we probably do need to control that somehow. I want to shift the conversation now to, you know, as we know, we can't, we can't regulate building materials anymore, right? So this week I had a, this has been a fun week, you know? Folks were upset about something in town and unfortunately, our code allows it, but we can't regulate building materials. The state says we can't do that. What I mean by that is if the house, if the zoning says you get, your house has to be 100% brick, when that building permit comes through and it's 100% siding, I can't deny the permit because I can't regulate the building material. If that material siding, brick, or panel or whatever is used for that particular application, I can't, I can't regulate it anymore. So, but one of the things we can do, and we're working on this, is to have a set of pre-approved building plans. While we can't control building materials, we can control how things look, form, character, and we could certainly make it easier for folks to get a permit and to build the way we want them to build. And so a lot of cities, not a lot of cities, starting to, starting to come across, in Texas, there's probably one town in Texas outside of us particularly, that may, that I think have this ability, but it's starting to come around, is that, okay, you want to, you buy a lot, we have a set of pre-approved building permits and plans ready to go. Pick one that you want, pay the fee, have a good day, right? It has to meet, you have to build it the way it says, so you can't deviate. It's got to look a certain way, so the section details showing the brick ledge and everything like that have to be there. We can make it easier for folks to build the way we want them to build. I can't, if they decide to put in their own permit and their own construction plans at their cost, well, they can come in the traditional way and apply for a building permit, go through the round of reviews. But that's one of the things we're looking to do in our residential districts, because there's very few design standards in there, is that we want to put some language in there to help us establish that as a norm in town. So like if, for example, we want to see, you know, craftsmen-style porches or something like that, we could engage with a third-party firm to design those homes, to have the set of plans already designed by an engineer, architect, have already received city approval. It's already got my stamp on, ready to go. The only thing you got to do is pick it up, pay the fee, have a good day. We would, we would literally be the only community in DFW that would have something like that so far. But that's one of the things that we're looking at doing to help cut the red tape. Any thoughts on that?
I think the difference of variety is that you have to kind of come here. To a, yeah, I can speak louder if just need be, I've just been, you know, kind of, yeah. Really, okay, I really don't need to. But the different design plans that you come with, you know, like a Tudor next to a craftsman, next to the industrial type or whatever you have to have. Because I don't like the houses, although I live in an established neighborhood, everything looking cookie cutter. I think when you have that type of designs and, you know, people shy away from that. I want something different, especially if I'm building. I want something unique, something that I can put my expression on. So it's kind of, it's kind of, I'm kind of iffy on that, you know? You'd have to have just too many different, yeah, design, you know, ideas or
And we, yeah, we would, in fact, the cities that have had a similar program, they would have one house type style, but have, you know, five or six different elevations. And it couldn't be back-to-back-to-back-to-back, they'd have to alternate, you know, every three houses or whatnot. So it's similar to what we do right now with plan developments and other residential. But we would have multiple versions or elevations, so you wouldn't get that cookie cutter feel. But any other, any other thoughts on that?
Well, the neighborhood I live in is custom estates.
Sure.
So that might be also something we could look at as far as when you want to do a development. That could be a secondary, so they would have to come in with those plans out there and say, okay, these are, these are custom homes, but they have to be within a certain perimeter. I can tell you right now, I, in my neighborhood, there is no two homes alike, anywhere. So it's still established, it still looks very classy, there's nothing crazy about it. There's no barn dominiums in there, so that's another thing, you know?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, no, I don't think you can build another one out there. Well, actually, there's one lot, but anyway, long story on that one. I don't see why we couldn't have, like you were saying, a, I mean, I'm all for streamlining. So when I bring up the barn dominiums, what I was saying on that is there's companies out there that just, they do nothing but build design.
True, yeah.
They sell design for about, I think it's like a $2,000, $2,500 fee to get their design. But if we partnered with something like that, said, hey, we want to set certain elevations up to where these could be kind of, you can shop the designs and these are already pre-approved. So now, like you said, we cut through the red tape and, well, we don't have to worry about all these, having to go through each individually, to go through recommendations, you know, the hamster wheel, if you will.
Sure, yeah. We're trying to change that hamster wheel.
Yeah.
We've got new hamsters on that wheel now.
Yeah, right. So the point being is if we could come up with something like that, absolutely. If we were able to partner with something like that, I mean, they could have hundreds of designs out there. Now, meshing that two, those two thoughts together is a builder could come in and say, I'm going to pick one off of here and put that in here, that going to pick this one off, put it in here. They can, you could have a home, a whole entire area zoned out for homes, single-family homes, and none of them would be the same. Because if you had the option of 200 different designs, I think that would alleviate the cookie cutter issue as well.
True, absolutely. We're, we're trying to, again, cut through the red tape and provide more variety.
But the upfront cost for something to have at least 200 different designs?
They're already done, a lot of them are already out there. That's what I'm saying, is we are, there are literally companies out there that have hundreds
It's the third home I've built, so, yeah, I've been the
So, who are you trying to put the red tape for?
I mean, you know, just
Is this, is this for, like, I'm trying to do infill, or is this like, I'm just
This would be for infill. The idea is that it's that we can, we can create or control the type of house and the style of house, since we can't regulate the building material, we can already have pre-approved the plans that show the 100% brick that maybe we want, or to show those things that we want, right? We could have that ready to go and encourage that. So it's a way that, we're not regulating building materials, but we are making it more streamlined if you go through this particular
So the target audience that would benefit from this would be the individual homeowner who bought a vacant lot and they don't want, we're trying to cut the process of them going through all of the design and engineering and materials and everything else.
They could also be a developer.
So
Because our, our cost
I see it as a, I don't necessarily want to open it up to developer, we're going to do something like that. I think that we should limit it to the infill. I don't want to see, you know, a 17-acre property if we've got, you know, 10 properties that are pre-approved. I don't want to have a developer come in here and just make every single thing like that. Because then we're taking away the competition within
True.
The market, right? We're limiting the innovation that can happen in the market. Because the market's going to, and those developers, they're more in touch with where the market is at, with where people are wanting their, their homes and to look like. Because they have to build a good product that people are going to want to buy. So I think that if we limit it to just infill
That's a good point.
Then I think that's great.
Okay.
But still make all of the major developers, if you're coming in and doing a multiple unit build, then you definitely need to go through the whole process.
I think that's a great point, I'm glad you brought that up. And that's something that I think would help control that as well. I think I've used the word control a little too more, too comfortably. I don't mean in that sense, but to accomplish the stated goals that you've got, right? I want to kind of run through some of these last particular items really quick, so I don't want to keep you too long tonight, so no, it's just the, this is the last city meeting for like anybody. So I appreciate you guys being here tonight. Here's what we're looking to do, looking to add as well. We want to kind of increase some opportunities for green agritourism, like fruit stands, produce stands, Christmas tree farms, you know, things like that back in the day, right? Roadside stands, agritourism, essentially. We're looking to probably add some additions to that. We're looking at Old Town, the Old Town District specifically for, right now, we have four districts, 1, 2, 3, 4. We have design standards for homes in 1 and 2, but we don't have any design standards for residential homes in 3 and 4. So we're looking about adding that into 3 and 4, because there's lots that are in Old Town 3 and 4 that people have bought. And the only guidance I had to give them was design it like 1 and 2, since it's Old Town. But in 3 and 4, the idea is a mixed use development, so there were, there's no guidelines if you just wanted to do a residential home. So we're looking about adding that. We're not looking about changing any, any land use tables within Old Town except for, like I said, the ADUs. And we are looking to probably allow for townhomes throughout Old Town, but that'll have to be vetted through you, have to be vetted through council. That's just an idea that we have. We also, we have to define, we have to look at our definitions and we're going to better define what we mean by a three-family dwelling, a four-family dwelling, and multifamily. And what I mean by that is that in Old Town, we do allow people to build a triplex or a three-family dwelling, a four-family dwelling. But our definition for multifamily is three units attached or more. So is it a three-family unit or is it multifamily, right? And that's the question that the builder, the landowner, the homeowner is wanting to know, and I don't have a definition for that. So we are looking to look at specific definitions from 1 to 4, right? 1 to 4 family homes. So if you think of a triplex or a quadplex, or that could be, if you think about like brownstones, like a townhome type, but there's three that are attached or four that are attached. And that would be one whole building on a single lot. So we want to have a better definition of what that looks like. And I think we're probably going to define multifamily as something that is five units or more, right? So that way we have that clear definition. Because right now it's confusing for staff, for us, it's confusing for the public, it's confusing for our building It's confusing for the public, it's confusing for our building, uh, community. And so we're looking at definitions. We are looking at plat review approval. Now that the state says, if it meets the zoning, you ha- the, it's the city or that approval body has to approve it. Um, we wanna kind of expedite the timelines on plat reviews. As much as we can, the state gives us thirty days. Once a plat application is filed and complete, uh, we have thirty days to bring it before P and Z or city coun- uh, and then city thirty days to city council. Uh, what we're looking to do is make that basically administrative approval, meaning it would, it would just be a staff-level review for plating, replating, things of that nature. Except for preliminary plats. We wanna bring preliminary plats to P and Z. We wanna continue to do that so that we still have a public forum for all our new development coming into town. Um, and so, but, since you've guys already looked at it, you've given them the, the okay, uh, the final approval of that, we're looking to do more administrative. So a lot of cities have had to amend their ordinances to allow the staff member to go ahead and just administratively approve it. It would go to the city manager for signature. Of course, it would have to meet the engineer's signature or their, their requirements. Stat- it, it, there's like a level, there's various, various levels that they have to pass before they can get approval. But we just don't wanna have to hold it up, um, by coming to P and Z and then having to go wait another thirty days to go to council, right? And then when it gets to council, because it's met zoning, it, it's adding to the agenda unnecessarily, because they are, they don't have, they couldn't deny it. If it met zoning, they couldn't deny it. Uh, if it didn't meet zoning, we wouldn't have brought it to begin with. We would've said, hey, it's, this doesn't meet, and we would recommend denial at, when it comes before you. It wouldn't have even gone to council. So it's just kind of gumming up the works, and so we're trying to cut, again, some red tape. So with, with the drafts that are coming, we're looking at those approval authorities to try to just streamline that. Zoning changes, however, plan developments always go through council. So that would still come to P and Z first for your review and approval, uh, recommendation, and then that would go to council. So none of that changes. Council always ha- always has the, the control over zoning. But we are just talking about plat approvals, which right now, that's just a ministerial act, you know? And site plan approval as well for, uh, our commercial developments. So we're looking to kind of, uh, um, speed the process up, uh, for that. Those are the changes that we're looking at, um, coming to you, um, in January. And then, um, we'll try to get it to you well in advance of the meeting, so you have ample opportunity to review each page of that. It should be significantly less to read. Um, any, any final thoughts or questions?
Definitions. Uh, just to, to remain in standard, I, I, my thought would be on the multifamily, for an example, uh, for quads and for tribes and what would say connect it to what's already standardized? For an example, you've got R one, two, three, and four. You got commercial one, two. Why would multifamily be one, two, three, four? And then defined upon, uh, multifamily, uh, one could be simply a quad or lower. Multifamily two allows for a, uh, well, three or, or lower, then multifamily two would be allowed for a quad or lower, and then multifamily three would be five and up. Just to standardize, because we already have C ones, we already have, you know, the, the, that function's already there.
One, one of the reasons why we, we, we did consider that, but we didn't wanna create another zoning district, right? So someone could, would need to rezone to multifamily one or multifamily two. Because the land uses ex- uh, that say dwelling, three-family, dwelling, four-family already in the table, we just wanted to look at how to define that better, instead of having to go back and create another column on that table. So we will be creating two new columns, which would be like the Oak Crest overlay, the transit-oriented development overlay, or like the entertainment district overlay. Um, we would create those columns, but we didn't wanna, the multifamily one and two, other cities have ver- variety of multifamily, um, columns in that. Um, we just looked at it as, let's keep it, we already have it on the land use, let's just get a, a better definition. And maybe that's something that we could, it could be called multifamily.
Multifamily three, multi-ten, four, multifamily five plus. There we go.
Right. Um, the, so we'll, 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 um, I, I've got, uh, we've got a good, good guy that's gonna be, he's gonna wordsmith it, and it'll bring before that, bring you, uh, and if there's any, um, additions to that, or if we can reword that to make more sense, uh, we'll, we'll certainly do that.
Uh, and my thought on that is to tie it towards the, the size of the plot itself. Just because you don't, you don't wanna put a five or more on a, an, an area that probably shouldn't have anything more than a, a tri.
Right. And, and right now, again, it would be our density's capped at.
That would be what would control it. It's not.
Yeah.
You know, rezoning to a something else. It's just flat out, you can't go any smaller, or you can't go any larger based on this plot. And I would think that would be, to me, multifamily, okay, what's the size of this area? We tie it down to, right now, the eight per acre. Well, uh, if this is a half acre, well, then you're not going any bigger than a quad.
Right.
And that, that's my thought process on that.
But, and, and that's, that's exactly the case. We have some, uh, odd-shaped or odd-sized lots that may be a little bit less than a half acre, a little bit more than a half acre. So the best they could probably do would probably be like a duplex. And when I say duplex in town, everyone thinks about certain places, and it's not a very uh, positive conversation when I talk to approval bodies like yourself and other pla- places. Now, we've had some ex- outstanding duplexes built in Old Town here recently that have, they are finished out, um, in a le- uh, at an expense, and the interior finishes and everything are extremely well, better than some of their, our most newest subdivisions in town, but it's a, it's technically a duplex. It doesn't look like it. It looks like a townhome. Right? Uh, but what if there was another unit next to it? That would be a triplex technically, right? Cause it's, it would be all on one lot. What if I added another one? That'd be a, that'd be a four-family dwelling, if it's all on one lot. Right now, uh, to call it a townhome is I'd have to put each one of those units on an individual lot, which we could. Um, we are looking at changing some of the townhome spatial districts that make more sense. Right now, you have to, the, the, your lot width on a townhome is forty feet, uh, which, which is okay if you're doing front-entry garage, cause twenty feet of that would be the garage, then you'd have the other twenty feet for the facade of the home. But, you know, the ordinance also says we want you to do rear entry. So if I do rear entry, I can shift it. Now I only need twenty-five feet up front for the lot, cause I can put the, the garage in the back, and it has to be rear alley. What we wanna do is give folks the option. If you're gonna go front-entry, you need a minimum lot, you need a wider lot, right? If you're gonna do rear entry, we'll let you go a smaller lot, but we're, you're still capping the density per acre. But, um, I like, I like that idea. Uh, let us come up with some, let us wordsmith that a little bit, and then pitch that back to you.
Any other?
Thought.
Yeah, any other thoughts on definitions or ideas on the UDC?
So with a triplex or a quadplex, they would be on a residential lot, or like R one lot?
No, um, they, right now, you couldn't put that on R one, but like in our Old Town District. You, you could allow it if you wanted to put it in R one.
I'm, I'm trying to, because when I think multifamily, I do think, uh, four or, I mean, well, five or more. And what he was saying about the multifamily one, two, and three, I would always think in terms of more apartments as opposed to townhomes or, you know, condos or whatever the, the quad or the, um, triplex would be. So I was trying to understand what the, um, the zoning is presently for the quad or the, uh, uh, triplex.
They're in the land use table. They're not permitted in like R one, R two, R three districts, or even R four, I don't believe. Um, you would have to be zone duplex, D duplex to put a duplex. If you're in Old Town, you can build a triplex. You can build a quadplex. If you're in Old Town, three and four, I believe, two, three, and four. You can't do it in Old Town one for some reason. Um, and there's other districts where you'd be able to do that. So like the Oak, Oak Crest overlay that we're talking about, those types of places, we would probably look to put that in there to allow for that. Um, but essentially, a, a duplex is two units on a single lot. A townhome is one unit on an individual lot, but we're talking about the, that lot, we're requiring that lot to be really wide. And it just doesn't make sense for a lot of those types of builders. Um, and it, there's a lot of wasted space is what I'm saying. And we don't really, we have a couple front-entry developments that are coming forward, but we want, we don't really want that. We want rear entry. But the reason why they can't do rear entry is cause some of the lots in town are s- the, the acreage is, is very narrow. And it's long, so best you can do is get a drive down the middle instead of, you know, alleys, you know, because then you don't have anything in the middle to play with, but the, um, that's the idea, is that we wanna better define what that is. Cause if it doesn't make sense what I'm saying, imagine you trying to read it and trying to build to that, right? So I'm trying to, we're trying to do some cleanup on that.
We'll kind of go back to the whole area of the development we were talking about a couple months ago, about over by the fire department, uh, the Crestdale area. Which, uh, I'm kind of glad to see that actually went through, but there was a lot of i- i- issues with it, like we, we were talking about the narrow streets, the, the frontway entries, there's, there's, it's so narrow through there. I mean, you were lucky to get a turnaround for the, to meet the requirements for the, uh, emergency services, so it, you know, th- that's exactly what he's getting at, and I can definitely appreciate it.
Well, P and Z, that's about all I've got, um, to present tonight. So I want to thank you again for your discussion, but happy to take any last comments that you have. Um, I've, we've got plenty of notes, and then we'll, gonna go back and review as well.
The only comment that I have is, is reviewing setbacks. You're reviewing setbacks. I know we've had a lot of developments that went in over the past couple of years. And, uh, I know with, even with, within my neighborhood, we had some people that wanted to put in pools. But the minimum setback for a pool is eight feet all around, and some of those yards are fifteen feet in the back. Um, so they would be more than happy to, but, um, you know, maybe looking at some of those setbacks for some of those other various buildings, cause.
Yeah.
Pretty wide setbacks.
Yeah, we, we could.
We're not building, you know, one-acre lots anymore. We're an eight-foot setback is, you know, applicable.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, there's, I'm not seeing one-acre lots anywhere out, out, except out in the county. And I'm not even talking Tarrant County. I'm talking like three, four counties away is where they're doing that, cause it's just, it's too expensive. Uh, an acre, an acred lot, I mean, would probably run two-something. And you gotta put a home on that, you know, that means you gotta sell it for seven, eight, nine-hundred thousand, just not, the, we're just not seeing that in the market anymore, but makes you be thankful for what you do have, right? All right, well, that's all I've got, um, for you, but again, thank you again. Um, if I don't see you or hear from you, I wanna wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. And that, need that information, uh, Tina will send it to me for the course you mentioned.
Yep, yep.
Yes, yes. I wanna get on top of that.
I have a welcome letter for you.
Okay.
So I will get that over to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you, thank you.
It's very much Nala Cart, uh, study.
Okay.
There's all kinds of stuff on there. It's not just P and Z related. I mean, it's a, it's all over the place, but it's actually pretty interesting. All right, any, any last conversation, board? All right, well, at this time, I'm gonna motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
All in favor.
All right, we are gonna be adjourned at seven twenty-eight.